To order will begin with the pledge of allegiance, followed by invocation by Commissioner Eudes.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning. If you please join me. Heavenly Father, we come before you today seeking your wisdom and guidance as we serve our community. Grant us clarity in our decisions, compassion in our actions, and integrity in our leadership. May we work together with fairness and humility, always striving to be the good of those we represent. Bless our county, its people, and our efforts to build a stronger, more just community. In your holy name, we pray. Amen.
There are no chair comments this morning. We'll begin with the consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I would approve the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
I oppose. Motion carries. This morning, Madam Clerk, do we have any public comment?
Mr. Chad Knight of the YMCA.
Chad.
Boy, you guys keep it hot in here. I'm burning up.
The alternative is not good.
Oh, phew. I just came out of steam and sun. I know it was hot, but, okay, I'm here, Commissioners. I got this letter addressed to me March twenty-fourth, twenty-five, and it said that we were delinquent on our ad valorem tax from tax years twenty-two, twenty-twenty-two, big old bold black letter on it. So when I got this letter, I called Trista, who's at the bottom of it. What does this entail, Trista? I mean, I don't know anything about this. What's going on? And she says, well, you owe property taxes. I said, well, we're with the YMCA. We don't pay property taxes on the buildings. And I said, it's not even our land. We're on the school land, so the school doesn't pay property taxes. Well, you had to fill out a form to get exempt. I go, okay, so how come I wasn't notified of this form when we put it up in twenty-eighteen? Then when we shut down for a couple of months, the city wanted us to do a couple of things. We opened back up in March of twenty-nineteen, never heard anything until I got this letter. This, I mean, first time we had this letter, we did get to receive some, those evaluations you get, those evaluations that show what your property's worth, you know, and it says this is not a bill. So we got those started in twenty-twenty, I believe. I never paid attention to those because I just thought it was value for the thing, so I didn't know. I was supposed to call. After calling the appraiser and talking to her, she says, that should have notified you to call them, and I didn't. I just didn't think we'd have to owe anything, so. So we're filling out this form. They told me to fill out this form. I took it. They told me to send it to the State Board of Tax Appeals. I guess I sent it off to them. They sent it back, said we gotta send it to local people. So then I dropped it off at Trista's last week and gave her the form to fill out, so I'm just here to plead my case. You know, we had no clue that we had to pay for these taxes, so that's where I'm at.
Chad, we'll look into it and we'll circle back with you at a later time.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comment? Madam Clerk?
No one else has approached.
All right. We'll continue then with our business agenda, and we'll hear from the Garden City Community
Good morning. Before you is a request. Now, we're in the process at Garden City Community College of a capital campaign on our construction trades program. We have been with the program for four years now and have recently, through our board, expanded from having a sixteen-hour certificate to now also having two different certificates and an associate's degree path. And last week, our board also took action to bring on an electrical trades program. The request before you is part of our capital campaign. We are looking at expanding space. With the space that we currently have on campus, we are very confined and limited to be able to grow the program. We have a six-thousand-square-foot planned facility expansion that would entail roughly about one-point-eight million dollars for this expansion. Of that, currently, we have secured and raised one-point-two towards that goal. Our request today is, in front of the Commissioners, is for two-hundred thousand to be able to help in closing the gap that we have. I think part of, you know, part of our goal and the conversations that we've had last year when we came before you and that we've continued is really trying to align to the strategic plan that you have at the county and being able to work towards a lot of the focus that is needed here in growth of housing. We've been working with our Southwest Kansas Builders Association. Justin Doniker is here representing them as well. But we've had tremendous support from industry, business, in order to be able to work towards the capital campaign goal of one-point-eight million. So with that, I just wanted to be able to leave it for questions, but kind of let you know just as far as an update of where we're at towards the overall goal. Our plan is to be able to have the funds secured and raised by the end of this year so that we can move forward with the expansion on the program by spring of twenty-six.
All right. Questions from the Commission to the President of the College, Dr. Ryan Ruda. Go ahead, sir.
Well, I'll get started because your source of funding is very similar to ours, same folks.
Mm-hmm.
I don't understand, you know, I have a hard time saying, committing our property owners to say, you're gonna, we're gonna use your funds to fund another taxing entity that does, you know, granted, we do fund like the showcase program, which is more, is not a capital program like yours is, and so I have a hard time saying we're gonna move property taxes from this source to another source, so that's kind of where I am.
And I would understand that. You know, respectfully, I would say that part of where some of the gap occurs for us, and you're right there as far as the funding being similar, what we don't have is sales tax. What we don't have is the ability, so when we have anything with rural housing incentives that come before us, as a taxing entity, our board takes action to approve those for the betterment of the community. This last year was roughly around nine-hundred thousand that we have approved, and in order for projects and in order for housing to occur across this community, that is what we feel like is in the best interest for us to approve those, you know, and so when we approve those, we're foregoing those for ten, fifteen, sometimes more, in order to help on the community side there. So, you know, I think our ask is really just taking a look at how we align strategic plans, how we align to be able to start moving the needle on housing needs in this community and expanding our program is probably the greatest source that we have on that. The other piece of that that I would say is, in addition to this, we're already partnering with four-year institutions. We have had had conversations with both Fort Hayes and K-State to be able to look at bringing construction management as a piece of this for bachelor's degree completion, so, you know, there are things that we are trying to put into motion there to help with retaining talent through these initiatives.
Well, I appreciate the efforts to train a workforce. And as far as the sales tax issue, you know, we asked the voters if we can use the sales tax in specific projects, and we've been fortunate because we're building the new AMS Health Center right now with sales tax, and we did a service center which houses juvenile justice in the twenty-fifth district and several others. But, you know, that's one thing that this county is very fortunate in, that we've become a hub shopping, and we have sales tax available, but we always ask the residents first before we get to use them, so that's my way.
I, thank you.
Yeah, I kind of look at it.
Commissioner Baskin.
Okay, sorry. I look at it a little bit different because a tax dollar is a tax dollar, and so you guys are a taxing entity, and so are way better if you, you know, raise your budget to fund this, it's a tax dollar, regardless whether it goes to you or it comes to us. And I think the sales tax that you're talking about isn't a special sales tax. I think you're talking about the regular sales tax.
That's correct.
And that comes back for cities and counties. I am on another committee as, and I recognize the serious need for housing in this community that we're far behind that, and some of that could be for lack of skilled workers on some of our construction crews. That could be a reason why we're lagging, falling behind, and I really see that what you're, the program that you're offering has a future benefit to our community and for those companies that will be building housing. And so if there's any funds that we have, like I said, to me, it's a tax dollar, it's a tax dollar. It doesn't really matter if taxpayers pay it to us or you or whatever. I'm certainly interested if there's monies that we can find to assist with this program for the future of Garden City and Fannie County. I'm interested in that. Thank you.
Commissioner Eudes?
Yeah, good morning, Doctor. Before I make my comments, could you, I think we had this discussion, could you talk about the training program and how it's gonna be more hands-on, where there's contractors that are willing to invest and take the students out and teach them hands-on?
Sure. Yeah, as part of our efforts with the program currently, we are, you know, we're really focusing on framing, so we're focusing on everything from really just building small sheds and giving students that perspective there in the shop. As we go forward and with this expansion, we have identified some key business contractors in the community that are willing for us to be able to have our students come on site, and they will actually be getting the hands-on learning. So as part of the curriculum changes and as part of the program changes, they will be out on site and learning and really expanding what it is that their skill set and their knowledge base will be, everything from forming of concrete to erecting a house from the ground up. And so by being able to be out there on site, they're really, one, being able to start engaging with contractors, which helps on the workforce side and employment side to have increased skill sets, but it also gets them out there and expanding their knowledge base while they're going through the program as well.
Thank you. I echo your sentiments, Commissioner Jones, on tax dollars, tax dollars, but also I think we have to look at investing in our community. We are short tradesmen out there. I do some building stuff on the side, as Justin's aware of, and we are short a lot of contractors, a lot of these hands-on trade, which slows down the housing market. And I applaud the college, the community college, you and Scott in pushing this forward and Justin partnering with the college, and I think this is an absolute awesome chance to move our community forward and be the forefront at training some individuals. I have talked since I've learned about this upcoming programs with several students that are very excited about the different trades, from concrete to finished carpentry to framing, and I've talked to three students that are in high school that are very interested in the construction by management. So I think we don't know if these students will stick around here or not, however, I think it's a, an investment for our future and as long as we have the funds and the general funds. Dewey, Gary.
Good morning, Commissioners. One of the things we had discussed, and I believe, and Dr. Ruda, maybe you could clarify this, but my understanding is the city is going to support this program by giving a hundred thousand dollars in twenty-twenty-five and budgeting another hundred thousand in twenty-twenty-six. Is that correct? Or has that changed?
So the city, the ask in front of the city is a hundred thousand, and they are, they are looking at it either in this current fiscal year or next fiscal year, but they have committed to supporting the project. They're just, as they're working through their budget process, they're determining whether it's this year or next.
I see. Okay. If you wanted to, you know, go forward with a, we would take this out of the unclassified general fund budget, and, you know, if there is a way that we could, since we haven't really budgeted for it, if we, and we do have reserves, so there's money to cover this, but if we, if there would be a way to budget for this or award a hundred thousand in twenty-twenty-five and then with the understanding we would budget for this in the twenty-twenty-six budget, and that money would come available, we could do it, you know, pay that out earlier in the year if that's needed. I know you're trying to wrap up your project, and would that work out for you, Doctor?
Yes. Yeah, that would align with our timelines.
Okay.
Any other questions, Commissioner?
No, thank you both.
All right. I want to point out a couple of things that are critical for the analysis is that one out of every eighteen jobs in our region is supported by the activities of our college and its students, and that our college is not only an education institution but a vital part of our local economic development engine. And I think that, for me, this is something that we can do. The administrative visors, we have the funds with which to do it, and I'm inclined to do alternative number one, which is to do a hundred thousand from the general fund in twenty-twenty-five and then the remaining request put into our budget for twenty-twenty-six. And I understand Commissioner Jones's hesitation. It's the same hesitation we faced last year, but we are going to, most likely, if I read the lay of the land correctly, support this economic opportunity and demonstrate to our taxpayers that economic activity and development, both institutionally through the college and through our commission, including our efforts at workforce development, are vitally important to Fannie County. With that, is there a motion, Commissioner Eudes?
Yes, I would move that we approve funding in the amount of a hundred thousand dollars to be paid from the general fund in twenty-twenty-five and take the remaining request of a hundred thousand dollars, a hundred thousand dollars under consideration for the twenty-twenty-six funding.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the funding as suggested in the motion. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries. Thank you, Doctor. Next up is to hear from Lana Devall, President and CEO of Economic Development regarding a memorandum.
Good morning. I have before you a memorandum explaining the need to extend the memorandum of understanding with empirical foods. Some of you, Larry, were on the commission when we started this project, and just as a little bit of background information, the MOU is not part of state law. It's not required that we enter into a memorandum of understanding when we do a tax abatement. We've chosen to do that locally just to ensure that the project knows the governing bodies intend to be supportive of a tax abatement for their needs. So this memorandum of understanding was originally done for three years. They did not finish the project, so we extended it, and they're really close to finishing now. The county appraiser has them at ninety percent on the manufacturing facility, a hundred percent on the ancillary buildings, so we feel confident they're gonna get there this year and be ready to go on the tax rolls next year fully. So this is just asking that you give them that additional time to finish their project.
Questions for Economic Development? Any questions with regard to the extension that is requested? If not, is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we extend the project, the MOU, to empirical.
Chairman to sign, sir?
Yes.
Is there a second?
Second.
When we have been seconded to approve the MOU and the Chairman, and the Chairman to sign, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
And we will try to get you in that building as soon as possible when they're ready to give a tour. I think you all would really like seeing it. Thanks.
Thank you. Next on our agenda is to hear from the sheriff.
Good morning, Steve Martinez, Fannie County Sheriff.
Sheriff, how's the world?
Crazy.
Crazy.
Crazy, stressful, but.
Thank you for what you do and keeping us safe and those so employed. We appreciate your service.
All right, thank you. Appreciate that. I'm just here before you today because we received a contract from Reno County for, they're just raising the rate for housing juvenile in their detention center if we need to, so. The agreement from Reno County updates an agreement from twenty-fifteen. The agreement allows for the placement of juveniles at the Reno County Detention Facility should the Southwest Kansas Regional Juvenile Detention Center be full or unavailable for youth placement. The agreement updates the rate to a hundred and sixty-five dollars per day for such placement, which is a ten percent increase, I think, from the last contract. So the alternative, one, approve the agreement and authorize the chair to sign. Two, decline to approve the agreement and direct staff to alternative action, and the recommendation is that we, we ask that you approve the agreement, alternative one, and have the chair sign. I don't even remember the last time we had to use Reno County, but it's just one of those things that, in case we have to, we already have the contract signed and in place.
All right, very good. Questions for the Commissioners?
Well, you answered one of my questions that you don't really, we haven't used it very often.
Yeah, I don't, do you remember any time we had, Beth, I don't, I don't think we've had anybody over there for years because of our detention center.
Beth, what do we charge out of non-contracting counties?
Two-hundred-and-fifty dollars a day.
Never mind.
Any other questions, Commissioners?
Want to be a member?
Is there a motion to approve the agreement and authorize the chair to sign, alternative number one, as recommended by the sheriff?
I'll, so move.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve alternative number one, to approve the agreement and authorize the chair to sign. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I'll sign.
Thank you.
I forgot to ask the counselor on that. Did you approve this contract?
Yes.
Thank you. Get my paperwork done. Next on our agenda is to hear from Larry Brungar with regard to chip ceiling.
Larry Brungar, Right-Away Supervisor. Board of County Commissioners is asked to consider and approve awarding the bid for the twenty-twenty-five chip ceiling project and the CMA material. The Public Works Department plans on chip sealing approximately forty-five miles of county roads for the twenty-twenty-five chip sealing project, and on March fourth, twenty-twenty-five, the Public Works Department advertised for two bids as part of the chip sealing. The first bid was opened up at eleven a.m. on April fourth, twenty-twenty-five at the Public Works Office for the chip sealing contracted work. One bid was received from B&amp;H Paving Incorporated of Scott City. The second bid was opened up at eleven-thirty a.m. on the fourth of April at the Public Works Office for the CMA material. Two bids were submitted from Huber Sand and Clot Sand Incorporated. On the CMA bid, Huber Sand was for one-hundred-and-fifty-six-thousand-eight-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars for seven-thousand-six-hundred-and-fifty tons of CMA material to be delivered on-site. Clot Sand Incorporated bid was two-hundred-and-thirty-six-thousand-eight-hundred-and-sixty-seven dollars and eighty cents for seventy-six-fifty tons of CMA material to be delivered on-site. And on the chip sealing bid, B&amp;H Paving Incorporated bid eight-hundred-and-ninety-two-thousand-eight-hundred-and-nineteen dollars and fifty-six cents to chip seal forty-five miles of county roads. There are two actions for this for the county commission to consider. So on the first one, the board may accept the bid from Huber Sand for one-hundred-and-fifty-six-thousand-eight-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars for seventy-six-fifty tons of CMA. The board may accept the bid from Clot Sand for two-hundred-and-thirty-six-thousand-eight-hundred-and-sixty-seven dollars and eighty cents for the seven-thousand-six-hundred-and-fifty tons of CMA material, or the board may reject all bids. On action two, the board may accept the bid from B&amp;H Paving for eight-hundred-and-ninety-two-thousand-eight-hundred-and-nineteen and fifty-six cents to, and approve the chairman to sign the contract, or the board may reject the bid. Recommends on alternative one, accept the bid from Huber Sand for one-fifty-six-eight-twenty-five for the seven-thousand-six-hundred-and-fifty tons of CMA. And on action number two, staff recommends alternative number one, accept the bid from B&amp;H Paving for eight-hundred-and-ninety-two-thousand-eight-hundred-and-nineteen dollars and fifty-six cents and approve the chairman to sign. The fiscal policy impact, during the twenty-twenty-five budgeting plan process, the Public Works Department planned on chip sealing twenty-three miles of road and doing a mill and overlay of twenty-two miles. However, due to the budget cuts, the twenty-two miles of road that was anticipated to have the mill and overlay did not receive funding, so to preserve that road, we, you know, we would like to chip seal, crack seal and chip seal it instead. So that was added to the twenty-twenty-five chip sealing project. The fiscal impact is six-hundred-thousand dollars to be paid from the road and bridge budget and four-hundred-and-forty-nine-thousand-six-hundred-and-forty-four dollars and fifty-six cents to be paid out of special highway reserves. And these two projects, basically, it's, the reason we have them in two parts is if one is not approved, we don't need the other. We need the two to do the project.
We'll stand for questions on both, but we'll take the action one at a time. So questions for Right-Away Supervisor, Mr. Brungar? If not, then a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve alternative one.
That is the, accept the bid from Huber Sand for one-hundred-and-fifty-six-eight-twenty-five for the CMA material. Is that correct?
Correct.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve action one, action one, item one, in the amount specified. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Action two, is there a motion?
I'll make the motion that we accept the bid from B&amp;H. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
B&amp;H chip sealed.
All right. And the motion includes the amount of eight-ninety-two-eight-nineteen-fifty-six and the chairman to sign the contract, sir?
Yes.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve action two, item one, in the amount of eight-ninety-two-eight-nineteen-fifty-six. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I'll sign the contract. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Been moved and seconded to approve action two, item one, the amount of $892,819.56. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, I'll sign the contract. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Can I assume, Madam Counselor, that the contract was approved? Next, here from the interim county administrator, Mr. Meeger.
Good morning, Commissioners, Gary Meeger, interim county administrator. On March 3rd of this year, the Board of County Commissioners approved a request for qualifications to be sent to qualified consulting firms to assist the county in a staffing analysis and organizational review. The RFQ was sent to four firms and was due back in the administration office on April 1st. Only one consulting firm responded to the request, and the request was reviewed by the, the review committee. The review committee consisted of Commissioner Roots, Commissioner Baske, County Clerk Munyon, and County Treasurer Joyce, Captain Werbaugh from the Sheriff's Department, and myself. The committee is recommending, or the alternative you have before you is to accept a proposal for the staff analysis and organizational review by Raff Tillis, the firm that submitted the proposal, in the amount of $79,750 to be paid from the general fund. Or you can accept a proposal from, by, from Raff Tillis with modifications, or reject the proposal from Raff Tillis and direct the staff to an alternative direction. The committee recommends, except, that you accept, alternative one, to accept a proposal for the staff analysis and organizational review from Raff Tillis in the amount of $79,750 to be paid by the general, by, from the general fund and authorize the chairman to sign a contract pending the county councilor's review.
Thank you. Commissioners that sit on that committee, I'd like to hear from you as to your recommendation as to the need to do the organizational review.
First, there was no other bids, and we had a great presentation by the Raff Tillis group. And I think the organizational review will, I think, give the administration, HR, as well as the commission, a better overview of where we're at and where can we improve as an organization to be stronger and be the top of the top.
It's your recommendation that we spend these tax dollars for this purpose?
Absolutely, yes, sir.
Commissioner?
And I also believe that with this review, it might give us a better idea of staffing needs, staffing needs in the future, pay and benefits. I think it's really going to assist us in the budget process to move forward to make sure that our employees and our organization, that we hold them in as high regard as we do our facilities. Because it's our position that we strive to be the best, and I want to make sure that we strive to be the best with our employees as well.
Very good, other comments? Commissioner Jones? Very good, is there a motion?
I'll move that we accept alternative one.
Is there a second?
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve alternative number one and utilize $79,750.00 to be paid from the general fund. Anything else? Hearing nothing, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Gary.
Thank you.
We now get to the last item on our business agenda, and we'll hear from Kelly. Commissioners, we're going to go with the flow here as far as taking a break or having a recess to acknowledge and have a reception for our employees. And Kelly, so tell us what we're going to do, and do the recognition, please.
Good morning, Kelly Munyon, Director of Human Resources. So this morning, we're going to be recognizing employees that the Kansas Association of Counties has prepared certificates and provided pins for. We also have one employee who has reached 20 years of service with us, who will be presented a 20-year plaque. After the recognitions, we invite everyone here to, to stay around, enjoy some light refreshments, and have an opportunity to congratulate the milestones with us. Before we get started, though, I would also like to share some other longevity we have here at the county, because I believe it speaks to the knowledge and experience of our staff that we currently have serving our community. Fannie County has 108 employees between one and five years of service, 51 employees with five to 10 years, 37 employees with 10 to 20 years of service, 22 employees with 20 to 30 years of service, and 12 employees with 30-plus years of service with Fannie County. Of these 12, one employee has been here 37 years and four months, starting her career with us in 1987. And our longest-tenured employee is currently at 43 years and 10 months of service, beginning his career with us in 1981. To all the new hires with less than one year of service, I would just like to say that we are happy you are on our team. We look forward to adding you into our longevity counts in future years. This dedication and commitment is invaluable to Fannie County. We are truly grateful to each of our employees' loyalty to our organization. There's no higher calling than a career in public service where we have the opportunity to not only make a difference, but to be a part of serving and improving our community. We'll now begin with today's recognitions, and we'll present department by department. For those being recognized, please stay around after. We'll have a group photo with the Board of County Commissioners once everyone is recognized. And Sheriff, with the largest number of employees being recognized, would you please kick us off?
Do you mind if I move the podium? Do you want to turn it a little bit?
Do what?
I think she wants to turn it a little bit.
Oh, okay.
Kind of tough for the audience.
All right, first up, I have Deputy Gabe Beasley.
Deputy Beasley is our administrative manager for Fannie County. This is completing for 32 years of service and commitment to local government in the state of Kansas. Gabe started as an office deputy in 1992. I don't think I was born yet when, when she started. And then from there, she went to warrants and, as the senior office deputy before becoming the administrative manager or the administrative assistant for the sheriff back in 1997. And it's continued going strong. Everybody has somebody in that office that you know handles everything, and it won't run if that person isn't there. Gabe is that person for the sheriff's office. We wouldn't know what to do without her because she handles everything. So congratulations, Gabe, and thank you.
Greg?
Next, we have, oh, right now.
She won't buy.
No. All right, next we have the undersheriff Greg Hands. We'll get that changed. Of course, Greg. Greg, get up here, you're not done. Greg started back in, well, 97. Started in 97, up in the jail, and then, of course, worked his way into patrol, and then spent most of his time in investigations, working up from investigator to sergeant investigations to lieutenant investigations for a while, then promoted captain investigations, and now is currently the undersheriff. So Greg's another one of those long-term employees that be hard to get along without him, so, thank you. Picture. Next up, we have the administrative lieutenant, Jerry Hahn. And this is for 16 years of service. Jerry's one that came to us and started in patrol back in 2008, and from there, the jail deputy, he moved up to patrol, the patrol deputy, then he went to what we call special deputy as part of the DEA Drug Task Force, patrol corporal, patrol sergeant, patrol lieutenant, and now he is a, or administrative lieutenant, which is a role, this is another one. Jerry wears many hats in the sheriff's office. He does a lot of our recruitment, he does our background checks for, for potential hires, internal investigations, all kinds of those stuff behind the scenes that a lot of people don't see, but are, but are very important to the workings of the sheriff's office. So, again, thank you, Jerry, appreciate it. We have several that aren't here, not able to be here because of their duties that they have going on. We have Sam Derrick, he was one of our warrant sergeant. He started off as the jail deputy in 2000, got promoted jail sergeant, then went to patrol, patrol corporal, patrol sergeant, a warrants deputy, and then just recently, within the last couple of months, was promoted to warrant sergeant. So we also have somebody from warrants, we have Clark Bates. Clark started off in 2016 as a jail deputy, moved up the ranks there from corporal to jail sergeant, and now currently just transferred to a warrants, our warrants division, and just recently graduated from the academy. He had to be a certified officer to be in that warrants deputy position, so he recently In civil, we have Elizabeth Medina, who was hired in 2004. She started off just temporary and seasonal as in the, as a food service assistant, and then from there, she transferred into our civil process division. Our civil process division, for those that don't know, are the deputies that go out and serve all the kind of court papers and things that need to be served, which can sometimes be a little crazy in itself. I mean, serving restraining, restraining orders, protection from abuse order, and things like that. So a lot of stuff that people don't like to receive, but somebody's got to do it, and Elizabeth is one of those that does that for us. I didn't know, I was going to have to do the ones that weren't here, I would have been better organized, I'm sorry. Next one we have, that wasn't able to be here, is Jessica Pacheco. She started in 2008 as a civil process server. In 2009, she transferred into the office as an office deputy, and then as, actually, July 4th of 2022, she was promoted to our record supervisor. So she's a deputy that runs our front office, that keeps everything organized and in line in there. Again, another one of those spots, a lot of people don't know what goes on day to day, and she's the one that keeps that going for, for the sheriff's office. And is that it? And I think that's it, alrighty.
Thank you, if you can take those to him.
Thank you.
Next, Shruti, would you like to go ahead and come up, being mindful of short staffing? Cynthia?
We are proud to recognize Cynthia. She has been with the Health Department for 16 years. She started off as a front office clerk and then found her passion helping young mothers with their new babies, helping, helping them breastfeed. She has expanded her career through educating herself, and she continues to expand her knowledge and her ability to help mothers in our community. She brings a lot of creativity and a lot of passion and dedication to her work, and we are really thankful for her service. Thank you, Cynthia.
Okay. Do you want to talk about Tasha?
I know. All right, we're going to start with James Good. He's been with us for approximately eight, almost nine years now. James came to us as a supervisor, was hired on as a supervisor when we had a place for that. Through the last eight years, he's excelled as a leader. James is in charge of our supplies for our everyday operations, and so really, without him, we wouldn't be as successful as we are. So thank you for your due diligence and your leadership, sir.
Stand up.
Not left, probably, if not, at all, buddy. Tasha, who wasn't here, able to make it, she, can you hold on, thank you. She is a 16-year employee. She came to us initially as an EMT, got hired on, worked her way up as a paramedic, and then eventually got hired on as a supervisor. She is in charge of our AHA program, which may seem as a small feat, but overall, it's very tedious and takes a lot of time and effort from her. So without that, she definitely makes the program successful. And again, without her leadership, we wouldn't be as successful as we are here at EMS, so thank you.
Thank you. That's yours. Doug, do you want to go ahead and come up and talk, please?
Chris Marsh actually is here today, but due to some scheduling things, he's project lead for all of our Microsoft stuff, so he's in a project meeting for Microsoft. He's been with the county for eight years. He's been in our IT department for roughly five of those, I believe, five or six. He transferred from the ISO over to us, and it's been a, an amazing help for us. He does project lead on everything Microsoft. He knows a million times more Microsoft things than I could ever hope to, nor would I ever want to, honestly. But we utilize him a ton. He's led dozens of projects and saved the county a ton of money because of it, so we appreciate him.
Thank you. Beth?
Can I put it in? Let's do Carlos. So Carlos has been with the county since 2000. He started out as a detention officer with the Juvenile Detention Center. In 2005, he moved over to Adult Corrections as an ISO. In 2012, he moved into the ISO II position as a supervisor. And then in 2020, he was promoted to deputy director of the Juvenile Detention Center. So Carlos has done all faucets of the Adult Corrections and the Juvenile Detention Center. He also sits on the Adult Corrections Advisory Board. You know, I admire Carlos's thirst for learning. If he doesn't have a book in his hand about leadership or moving forward, I'm surprised. So his dedication is appreciated. So Stephanie came to Adult Corrections in 2008 as an ISO. She moved up to an ISO II position in 2010 and became deputy director of Adult Community Corrections in 2012. And as we merged the Juvenile Detention Center, Youth Services, and Adult Corrections, she became deputy director of Youth Services as well. the Juvenile Detention Center, Youth Services, and Adult Corrections, she became Deputy Director of Youth Services as well. So her compassion is, I can't even say, for staff and the people we serve. So her knowledge, these two, they keep the doors moving, keep us moving forward. So I appreciate it. And then we have, oh, I'm sorry. We have Yolanda Herrera. She started with the county in 2000 as a part-time secretary. In 2001, she became full-time at Adult Corrections. Yolanda is like our gay. She keeps us organized. She keeps us moving forward. I don't know what we'd do without her.
So Beth is our 20-year employee, and Gary's going to say a few words and present her plaque.
Well, it's my pleasure to be able to recognize Beth Beavers for her 20 years here at Fannie County. Beth grew up in Kansas City, in the Kansas City area, and earned her bachelor's degree in criminal justice from Georgia State University. She moved with her husband to Fannie County in 2003 to raise her children and be near her family. Beth began in Fannie County in 2004 as an intensive supervision officer in Community Corrections. In 2011, Beth was promoted to the Director of that department. And in 2016, when the Community Services Center was built and the Department of Corrections was consolidated, Beth became the Director of Operations overseeing the day-to-day operations of the Community Corrections Adult Division, the Youth Services Division, and the Juvenile Detention Center. So she had a lot on her plate at that time. In 2018, Beth worked for a brief time as a budget and financial analyst for the Fannie County Administration until becoming the Executive Director for the Department of Corrections in 2020. Beth successfully oversees approximately 50 employees between the Adult Corrections, Youth Services, and Juvenile Detention Center. And I tell you, I've only been here a couple of months, but I've really enjoyed the opportunity to work with Beth. She is a very respected inner field. We, and of course, I've been in county administration for a while, and you get to know people, even their reputations in other areas, and Beth has done a great job for Fannie County. She's not only a great leader, a good director, but she's got a lot of institutional knowledge, and she's a good asset to the county. So I really appreciate Beth, the work you've done, and your dedication to Fannie County. Thank you. Here is a plaque, just and I appreciate, again, all you've done. Here's Thank you, Beth.
For your 20 years of service. With your permission, Kelly, I'd like to read the list of persons that we recognized today and read them into the record.
Yes, sir.
For eight years of service, Christopher Marsh, James Good, and Clark Bates. For 16 years of service, Stephanie Roush, Elizabeth Medina, Natasha Oglesby, Jessica Pacheco, Jerry Hahn, and Cynthia Castillo. 20 years of service, Beth Beavers. 24 years of service, Yolanda Herrera, Sammy DeRoche, Carlos Morello, and Greg Hans. 32 years of service, the person apparently that runs the place, Gabe Beasley. I wanted to say on behalf of the Board of County Commissioners, to all the employees and those recognized today, thank you for your service.
May we have a picture of everybody that was recognized with the board, please? And then Clark, if we can get a picture of you and Steve, please. Thank you. No, I'm sorry. It's tough with your guys' schedule. Thank you.
All right. Kelly, you have the floor, but I believe we're going to take a break and recess the commission to have a short reception for everybody.
Yes, please. Thank you.
How long would you like to recess so that the viewing public knows when we're going to reconvene?
20 minutes is fine, sir.
We'll reconvene then at 9:45. We'll be in recess.
Good morning, we'll call the commission back to order. It is nine forty-five. And I was advised during break that today is Lon Pishney's birthday, so to former commissioner and representative Pishney, happy birthday. Next on our agenda is the staff reports from the fire department. And you don't look like Kenny Smith.
Well, good morning, commissioners. Battalion chief Adam Patterson, not Kenny Smith. We're still balled together, but it's all right. So March was a pretty busy month for us, along with Station Three construction, trying to get that stuff planned to get open. We had our annual arf burn to cover the airport, our annual research on it. We also had three mutual aid grass fires that we helped with. We went to Kearney County twice, and we also went to Grant County once. So for pretty good-sized grass fires that they needed help on, so we went out there. We had ninety-four overlapping incidents this year, or not this year, coming up so far. So that's kind of been a... A lot of those have to do with the airport also. A lot of calls just overlap, and especially during the snowstorm that we had and the two dust storms. So we had quite a few overlapping calls in. It's bomb tar averaged about nine calls a day. When I first started, we were running about two and hoping for more than that. So quite a bit more calls, lots of training hours. Questions?
Any questions, commissioners? If not, oh, go ahead, sir.
Your Kearney County events, that one was fairly large on the north side of the...
Yeah, so the second one was a lot larger than the first one. The first one kind of started in Haskell County, kind of touched the edge of our county, and kind of went into Kearney County and Grant County. The second one actually started out on the west side of town and kind of pushed its way into the golf course area. So they asked for not only a brush truck, but for us to provide structural protection too. So we actually sent two trucks over there. So two crews were out there trying to help out that day.
Is there any determination where they should...
Not that we've heard so far. I know we work in conjunction really well with the Kansas State Forest Service, and so they're really big into trying to let us know once they get it all figured out. They mapped it and all that stuff. So we hadn't really heard any more from them or anything. So we always like kind of hearing where it started and kind of how it went. But yeah, it got really close to town, so we had a, I think, a good wind shift at the time, so it kind of stopped it from getting into town, so... Which was a good thing for them, but we were there to provide whatever they needed whenever we could. So we do that. We try to help out as much as we can without compromising our staffing here. So right now, we have the staffing to be able to send as much as we can at the time, so.
Well, it's the continued dryness and continued wind that doesn't...
Yeah, we don't...
...really busy.
We live in the Dust Bowl again, is what I'm saying. So until it rains this week is what they're saying. So hopefully. We'll see. We know what it means when they call for it, so.
Well, there was a good idea by Commissioner Jones to make sure that we get our rainmaker. Pastor Haake here from the Nazarene Church did a wonderful job with invocation. I'll extend an invitation.
Pray for some rain for us.
Can't hurt, can it? Anything else? If not, thank you.
Thank you.
Not disparaging the ones that have given the invocation, but your track record's not very good.
Thanks. We'll hear from the treasurer, please.
Good morning.
Good morning, chairman and commissioners. In front of you, you have an idle funds report for the first quarter of 2025. So I'll just go through the sections of this report. The first section at the top is demand deposit accounts. So these include money market and checking accounts that the county currently holds. The next section is current investments. So we do have some federal investments, some T note and T bills. And then also, we have certificate of deposits in this section. So these are more of our longer-term investments. And then at the bottom is a summary of interest earned by financial institution through the quarter. Next quarter, you'll see a year-to-date as well. You have that, but it's, you know, it's the same. So a couple things to note on this report. We do have a large T-bill investment of approximately ten point two million or so. And so that is what I have earmarked for the new EMS health department facility. And so we'll keep investing that probably in three-month increments and draw it down as construction continues and as we need those funds. The other thing to note, too, included in this interest income is approximately one hundred and fifty-five thousand that was earned through an investment of tax collection. So the way that works is when the treasurer's office takes in all the money for the taxes, I usually put it in a very short-term investment to earn a little bit more money than we would in a regular checking account. So about one hundred and fifty-five thousand of the six hundred sixty-five thousand that we did earn in the first quarter was in relation to that. So you won't see that type of interest actualized in the second quarter. However, well, you might see a little bit of that actualized in the second quarter as we go into the May collection cycle. That's just kind of been our standard practice. Otherwise, we do have investments out through the end of the first quarter of 2026. I've kind of pulled it back with our length of investments just because of the uncertainty in the market and cash flow concerns. So does anybody have any questions?
Krista, your CD rates, your current bids probably are quite a bit less.
They are quite a bit less, and you can see that at the tail end. You can see they're kind of diving off. The ones we're going to see mature soon were made when interest rates were a lot higher.
Other questions for the treasurer? If not, I want to just encourage you to continue the good stewardship with the idle funds.
Thank you.
We'll hear from Mackenzie Phillips, Development and Administrative Coordinator.
Good morning, chairman and commissioners. Mackenzie Phillips, Development and Administrative Coordinator. I just have a few updates for you this morning. First, I just wanted to say that, so we did have a successful Southwest Kansas Highway Officials Meeting on April tenth. There was probably about forty to fifty across all of the counties within District Six. And thank you to Commissioner Jones and Chairman Schultz for attending that day. So we also, we're getting ready to schedule a meeting for the Northwest Industrial District. Before the project lets, we just want to get all of the property owners in the same room or virtually to just discuss where we are in the project, go over again with them all of the details, and then start to move forward with letting the project. And then, just so you're aware, I will be out this week at a conference for the Kansas Association of County Planning and Zoning Officials to catch up on everything that's going on in the state with planning and zoning right now. So any questions for me?
Thank you.
Thank you.
County Administrator, sir?
Good morning again, commissioners. First thing I'd like to do is try to introduce Kenny Smith as a new EMS director. Kenny, you want to come to the podium? Kenny started with us last week. Kenny is a person that grew up in Holcomb, Kansas. After high school, went to the Marines, came back home, started his career in EMS with Finney County under Mr. Bob Pruitt. He's also served as the EMS director for Hamilton County. While working for Finney County, Kenny has served as an EMS supervisor and assistant EMS director. He's most recently served as the training officer for Garden City Fire Department, and again, has started, come back to start with us last week. He is married to his wife, Deidra, and has two teenagers. So he's solidly in our community, and I think he is a great addition to our EMS staff. In just the short time he's been here, we've talked about a lot of different things. He's got a lot of good ideas for moving the department forward, and we're glad to have him, I think, under his leadership. I think we'll definitely have a good organization. And so really appreciate Kenny being here. Kenny, do you have any things you want to say?
Thank you for the opportunity to be a part of the family again. So thank you.
All right, welcome. Anything else, Gary?
Yes, sir. I just wanted to mention that Commissioner Baske and Commissioner Oates are going to be attending the Governor's Kelly's press conference tomorrow at two PM at the Endowment Room at the Garden City Community College. Also, draw your attention to the bottom of the page. On the twenty-eighth of this month, there's going to be a work session in the morning, then a joint Finney County, Garden City, City of Holcomb meeting at noon. And then we're going to reconvene for a strategic objective plan session that afternoon. I wanted to announce that the audit is supposed to be presented to the commission on June second. We should receive a draft sometime early part of May, and we'll be communicating with the auditors at that time, and they'll present that later on. And then the first budget presentation will be on June twenty-third. I think we've presented some of those dates to you before, but wanted to just kind of remind you of some of the dates that we have, the important dates. Beyond that, I don't have anything to report.
Any questions for the administrator? All right, we'll go next to monthly reports. Madam Clark?
Oh, those were just your department monthly reports. I do believe we have a new report this time from Nolan for the building and grounds.
Very good. Any questions? County counselor?
You had asked that I look up House Bill twenty-two seventy-five on the legislative website. It does appear that the last activity on there said it was enrolled and presented to the governor on Friday, April eighteenth of 2025, and that's the last that is in there. So no further action yet at this point.
Okay, so she, it was enrolled on the eighteenth, and she has ten days to sign or to veto, correct?
I believe so, yeah.
So we're still waiting?
Correct.
We'll make note of that when we say happy birthday to Mr. Pishney, that the work's not yet done because the governor hasn't signed it.
Correct.
Any other report?
No.
Any questions for the county counselor?
Is it appropriate to say something to the governor tomorrow when she's here?
Why not?
Can we request that she bring that and sign it in front of us tomorrow? I don't need a response.
Ask her the status of it?
Well, in that regard, Gary, could you call the governor's office and see if she has a chance to sign that bill here? That would be wonderful. And I'm quite certain that Schroed is looking forward to meeting with the governor on this important health issue in southwest Kansas. All right, commissioners' reports, we'll go right to left. Seniority?
Okay. Attended the Southwest Kansas Highway Association meeting along with you. It was a very good meeting. You get to talk to other... It was a very good meeting. You get to talk to other Commissioners. Also had an Economic Lifelines meeting and met with Matt Riffer, if I got the name right. And he is the CEO of the American Council of Engineering Companies. They use a zillion different acronyms on these things, and I'm lucky I got this one written down. But it was interesting that of the bill that was passed in twenty-one or twenty-two when they gave all the money for infrastructure, I can't remember the title of it, but it was something like Rebuild Better or something like that. But of that bill, there's only sixty-eight percent of it that's never been committed. So they've got a hundred and twenty-five billion that's sitting there, and they, nobody's... It was interesting too that he noticed that the previous administration announced thirty-two hundred commitments, but they didn't follow through. There was no paperwork done, no commitments done. And so the current Secretary of Transportation is trying to get through this process. And so all of these funds are sitting there. Needless to say, there's things that are interesting about things in DC. Also had a meeting with the Fannie County Committee on Aging, and they are proceeding with their expansion of their location. And here's a rough architect rendition of what they want to do. And so if anybody's really interested in this, I've got it all piled up here.
With the senior Senator?
Also had a construction meeting with Hutton and Company at their office. And the next one, I think, is in May. Maybe, I would have to look at my calendar right quick. May sixth is what I've got. And it's at the site, so since it's fenced in and they're stirring dirt, we'll see what's going on.
Moving a lot of dirt.
Yeah.
Really good. Thanks for staying on top of the EMS project.
That's what I've been doing.
Only by tenure. Mr. Utes?
Yes. Couple weeks ago, I was up to Health Department and assisted Shruti. She put together a real nice video and document, information on Health Week. And I got to meet with a lot of the staff up there. And Shruti, your leadership is remarkable. I greatly appreciate just listening to the staff. They love it up there. They love working, but they're excited about the new facility. And so I do appreciate that, Shruti. And the Law Enforcement Center group meeting, we have a meeting scheduled for Wednesday to discuss the technical aspect and then the marketing. So we'll see where we go from there. A lot of support from our other entities. And then, as Gary alluded to, next week, we'll have our meeting, our workshop meeting, where we'll talk about our governance model, our group that got together. We should be able to get through the first part real quick, but the strategic planning is going to be a little bit different than what I think the Commission has looked at in the past. We're proposing, looking at more of a twelve-to-eighteen-month strategic goal planning with objectives as well as who's responsible for meeting that in a timeline. And the primary reason for that is to, for example, we can sit here and put together our five-year goal, but we may not be here in five years. So if we look at twelve to eighteen months, and then every year, look at that, we can build our model. So one of the things that we would ask, you start thinking about what those goals, what goals you have in mind so that we can move forward. Some of the goals can be some of the projects we have going on, the scan, the pay study, things like that.
When you guys meet with the Governor, you might mention what we've done with sales tax in the past and what we are doing. It would be nice if we could proceed.
The sooner she signs, the faster we can get going. You'll be chairing that meeting on Wednesday. I'll be gone. And with the help of former Commissioner Dries on the technical side of it, we hope that she doesn't veto it, and I think you should plan that we should go forward. I have not heard anything that she wouldn't, and I would really like to know if Mr. Meeger, Gary, if you have a positive response from her office, that would be wonderful. It'd be a great press opportunity for her here. Of course, you know those kinds of things. Sometimes you can overplan them, or they can be underplanned and spontaneous and work really, really well. So especially with two of our Commissioners going to be there, the Community College support, and I'm confident the city will be present as well as representatives from the school district. It's not very often that the Governor comes to town.
There's several other counties included in that thing too, it's just not us.
Right, there's four other counties, three other counties and us, four total. All right, Commissioner Baske?
I had three meetings since our last together. The first one was with the Fair Board. They're progressing along, getting ready for the county fair this summer. One of the things, as I was sitting there listening, there was some re-discussion about some equipment that gets utilized, not just for the fair, but for other things, I think, maybe in the concession area or whatever. Some things like refrigerators and freezers and things like that that maybe they thought were not working or inadequate. Maybe we could have a report from the fairgrounds. Administrator, you know, Supervisor to maybe brief us on what the status is of their appliances and things like that for people who use and rent the facilities down there to see if the equipment is in good working order and is it adequate for different events and things like that so that they don't... Maybe the organizations don't have to bring in their own equipment, so. The second was the extension office. I went up to Scott City for that, maybe we can switch back and forth. And, you know, they're just reporting on extension things, and they participate in the county fair as well. One of the things is that I've been a student for my entire life, and I'm learning way too much about livestock and things like that that I've never knew about before, and I still kind of just sit there thinking, man, this would be perfect for Larry. He knows all about that stuff, but maybe it's good that I'm learning about...
Educational.
All things livestock and education, or agricultural. So, and then my third meeting, it was really brief, was Convention and Tourism Bureau. But that was a brief meeting, but they're gearing up, I think, that through the, you know, the summer coming up, beginning their very busy part of their season and everything, so that's three meetings.
Very good. I did attend the highway meeting, and unfortunately, I cannot announce that we have the current plans for eighty-three long-term improvements or of US fifty west of Cimarron. They did advise that they are going to complete the four-lane to Cimarron this year and early next year, which will be a great improvement to Southwest Kansas, but it'll get us a bottleneck of traffic into Fannie County to the airport. And they didn't present a plan of the four-lane around Garden City on US fifty from the four-lane at the airport. So to the extent that the planning hasn't come to fruition, that means that our legislative coalition has work to do as well as us as Commissioners and other leaders in Southwest Kansas. Highway infrastructure seems to be one of those things that the Legislature gets around to about once every ten years, and we need to get in the plan. And the best way to get in the plan is to be engaged now as they approach that. And a former Secretary of KDOT is in the Legislature, and we've had a chance to visit and see about how our legislators can assist in implementing the new highway plan to include those improvements on US fifty and eighty-three as are vital to our community, and we'll continue to press for those needs. I will be, plan to be absent on the fifth of May. I believe that's our first meeting in May for regular session. That's yet to be determined as, that's water temperature-dependent, which is slang language or code language for Fisherman's Duty to make sure that it's just right if you're going to miss a meeting for a rightful purpose. This afternoon, I leave to go to Manhattan to attend the State County Commissioners Association meeting. Vice Chairman Gorman is at that meeting today for additional presentation, and then two-day session on Tuesday and Wednesday. That's my report. Is there any other business before the Commission, and if not?
Just because I missed this email earlier, that Treasurer did give me an update. We have collected an additional one hundred and forty-five thousand, seven hundred and eighty-two dollars and thirty-four cents in delinquent tax on tax sale-eligible properties just since our last meeting, for your information at this point.
Wonderful. Anything else, Commissioners? Administrator?
One thing I was going to just mention, just so the public knows, but several of the Commissioners and staff will be going to recognize Beth Beaver's at a luncheon today, so that'll be at Nepali's.
Wonderful. What time does that start?
I'll check and let me find out, but I believe it's going to be around one-thirty, or eleven-thirty, I mean.
Eleven-thirty?
Yeah.
Cool. All right, anything else? If no one has anything else, motion to adjourn. Commissioner Utes?
I'll move.
In a second?
Second.
Been moved to second to adjourn without a discussion. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. We are adjourned.